Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Nobody is paying attention. Welcome to the regular Board of Education meeting for September 12th, 2022. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. The first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we're at items for information. And the first item is Naming Rights Committee Recommendation. So who's going to lead this, Dr. Campbell?
Good evening, Board. Happy to be talking to you from this side of the table tonight. But every five years, the ETHS Naming Rights Committee convenes to receive nominations for service-related naming rights at ETHS. And we're at the fifth year. And so Mary Redino is going to share a little bit about who the nominee is for this evening. We're happy to present this particular person to you, a longtime ETHS staff member. So Mary, go ahead and take it away.
Sure, thank you. As you read in the memo, and I'm sure most of you saw the actual submission, we had presentations for four different potential nominees. And some of them had served ETHS in an employee capacity, some had served within the community. All of the people that we heard nominations for had served for a long number of years. And so the eight people on the committee then voted to kind of narrow it down from four submissions that were heard to two. And once those two nominations were decided upon, we took a random vote to make sure that no one was influencing or being influenced because we heard some great presentations. And after voting for the two finalists, which was actually done on an old-time paper ballot, I still have all the little tabs in my folder. And by a vote, a leading vote, the committee selected Shirley Nanini, who some of you may be familiar with. Shirley was here for many, many years. And she served, and Marcus might have to correct me, but I'm going to try to recall her positions off the top of my head. She was the co-athletic director, I believe, with Willie May, aside from being a teacher, and then co-athletic director, and then the department chair of the PEW. Health Wellness.
Yes.
Sorry, you all know what I'm saying, sorry, Marie. So Shirley served for many years until her retirement. And she was, you know, I don't want to restate what was already in the presentation, but she was just instrumental in advancing women in sports. And whether that was compensation for the coaches and leaders of women's sports here at ETHS or actually encouraging young women to get involved in sports. So it was random and coincidental that it happens to be the 50th anniversary of Title IX, but really fitting. And we had just a great opportunity to recommend that nomination to the superintendent. And so that's what we did back in July, which is the memo that you saw in your packet.
Thank you, Mary. And I actually have the hard copy of what was submitted on Shirley's behalf, and I can pass this around. And we're happy for Shirley and congratulations to her and her family. As Mary mentioned, she was very instrumental with Title IX. And so as we celebrate the 50th year of Title IX, we're going to be doing a number of things which the Board will hear about soon. But this is a very fitting tribute for Shirley during this particular time. And so congrats to her and look forward to celebrating this naming in her honor.
And if I could just add one thing, this is only in practice done every five years. So five years ago, the fieldhouse was named after Willie May, who was her co-athletic director and also instrumental in the community and at ETHS for many years. So five years from now, the same process will happen again and you'll receive a new recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you.
It's. Sure.
Comments?
It's not always going to be about sports, though, right?
No, absolutely not. And, you know.
I mean, not that there's anything wrong with that.
Multiple nominees were not connected to sports.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions by the Board? Great, nice way to start. All right, next item, new courses, course changes and course deletion proposals. I bet Dr. Beavis is going to. Yep, there he is.
I'm just thrilled to be here doing this new courses tonight because we have a course in here. I'm just, okay, I don't want to spoil the lead, but I'm going to, ready? We have a BNAP program for the first time. It's a health science pathway. It's a collaboration with North Shore University Health Systems, Okden and ETHS. And we are just thrilled to be able to offer that. Students who complete that program are eligible to sit for the Certified Nursing Assistant Certificate and gain full employment through our partner. So we're just completely thrilled. That's the lead, so I didn't want to bury it, so it's out there. All right. And here is the rapid process in which we participate in each time we do this. Department chairs recommend courses. The assistant superintendent, myself, I agree that they, and sign off to move them forward to the school board. If approved by the Board of Education, teachers will, department chairs will develop curriculum and assessments for those courses. Input, we received input from Curriculum Forum, teachers, department chairs and administrators. And the decision is made by the Board of Education every time we bring new courses to this body. Here are the proposed new courses. It looks like a lot, but the CTE courses can be grouped. You have Orientation for Health Careers, Medical Terminology, and the Certified Nursing Assistant Training. And those together form our Health Career Pathways Program. And they culminate in the 12th grade. And the reason that's 12th grade only is because of the clinical rotation that students actually have to complete as part of that course. There's certain requirements, age requirements and grade requirements that the state has. And that's why you'll see that that's for 12th graders only. But we are very, very excited, several of those courses. Actually, the Orientation to Health Careers, the Medical Terminology and the Certified Nursing Assistant Training Program are all dual-credit. So we're very excited to be offering dual-credit with our partners. So we're super excited about that. We also see Microsoft Office Suites, Computer Applications 1 and 2. We're building a pathway there as well. And those courses all provide industry certifications. Under History, we're really proud. We have Dr. Kamasi Hill has piloted African-American Studies. May have read about it in the New York Times or in Newsweek. But Kamasi has been actually, he's not just piloting it here at ETHS. He's part of the national body with College Board with professors and high school folks coming together to craft this curriculum. And Kamasi's been working, Dr. Hill has been working diligently on that. And we're going to go for the full approval of that course for next school year. And we're also going to offer a History of Black Chicago through our history department. It's for grades 10 to 12. It's one semester, and we're also looking to offer that in the summer as well. We're very excited about that. We'll be partnering with local historians and historical agencies in that course. In Mathematics, we're going to firm up our Algebra and Coding and make that an official course. We've often integrated aspects of coding into several of our sections, but for the first time, we'll be able to actually offer that as Algebra and Coding. We're also very excited to see transdisciplinary science, biology and science chemistry in partnership with Northwestern for our students who traditionally have been striving readers. So we're going to actually be able to offer a 9th and 10th grade combined experience with reading specialists and a science teachers in that classroom. So we're very, very excited to offer that. And in Special Education, we have Recreation and Leisure Resource for young adults. That's part of our Transition Program, part of our Teams Program for our special education students. Before I go on to revisions, are there any questions about these very exciting offerings?
I have a quick question. I mean, these are fabulous. I'm really excited about the CTE and the history. But can you talk just for a second about the transdisciplinary sciences and how that relates to the science requirements for freshmen and sophomores, et cetera? Can you kind of put that together?
Absolutely. So you might not be aware, but a little bit of background. Currently, our freshmen who are striving readers do not take science. They take science in 10th grade. This class actually opens that up to be able to take biology, in this case, with literacy support in the 9th grade. And that actually will fulfill their life science requirement for graduation. And then sophomore year, along with, as their other students do, they'd be able to take chemistry, which would fulfill their physical science requirement. And then they would be able to take electives junior and senior year. Right now, in our current structure, students who are striving readers don't have access to those elective science courses beyond the grad requirements until 12th grade. So this really broadens the science opportunity. The real nice thing here is that this course was in the planning before the pandemic. So we've put a lot of, we put a lot of planning into this one. And we've had a lot of, it's actually an excellent example of our partnership with Northwestern. We've partnered with Learning Sciences and also the Science Department over there. So looking forward to some really opening up opportunities for our students. Long overdue.
Thank you.
Got it. All right, revisions.
I'm real excited about that one course that you've kind of mentioned, the History of Black Chicago. Is there an opportunity for me to take that? No, never.
I think we have it in the summer.
I may show up. You said that, and I've been reading about there will be some opportunities for kids to go to some of the museums. And it just sounds really very stimulating. And I do hope that a lot of students, different students, not just the black students, take advantage of this opportunity. This is great. So my hope is that other kids who identify differently will take this course.
Yeah, I'm very excited at the opportunities that this affords too. And I think that the opportunity, not just to study history in your backyard, literally, but to also be able to do, in quotes, "history," right? To be able to really do meaningful inquiry is something really exciting for our students.
Hi, I'm Nicole, everyone. Adding on to the history proposed new course, I know that the student body would be really excited to see the AP African-American Studies and History of Black Chicago because it's something that everyone has been talking about, wanting to see more variety in history courses, so I'm excited for that.
Great, wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
Student has spoken.
Thank you. Yeah, we're excited for the history courses too. You know, we wanted to expand the history offering specifically as one of our goals, so. So proposed course changes, I'll just run through these briefly. A lot of these are title changes or level changes. One of the significant level changes here I want to underscore because we've been doing, again, we started work on this pre-pandemic. And we have course teams that have been working on this. It's the level change, Chemistry for 10th Grade Chemistry will become a Pathway to Honors course. We have, the buy-in of our teachers have worked diligently on the profile for this course, the assessment profile, the content, it's aligned to NGSS. And it is, it's going to be very, very exciting. And they've worked probably four or five years on it. So they're, again, it was a pre-pandemic start, right, with our work? And then, but they continued to work during the pandemic on it in course teams. And they worked all throughout last year as well. So they're, and they've been piloting a lot of the assessments. They're very excited for that offering. Let's see if there's anything else that jumps out. We are doing a title and level change. It's actually AP Pre-Calculus. It's formerly Advanced Pre-Calculus Honors. The College Board is adopting an AP Pre-Calculus. And we figured we'd kick the tires next year, try it out, see how it goes. And then the other ones are essentially title changes to have more transparency around what the course actually, the course offering actually is. Questions? All right. We do have, the last slide is our proposed course changes in Special Education. What you need to know is this is part of our Teams Program. And what we've done is this is part of our transitional program. And what we've done is we've expanded what were one semester courses to one-year courses because we have an abundance, we have extra time to work with our students. So we've taken one semester and we bumped each of those courses out to a full year. And what that does is that allows us for more time to transition and more, a deeper dive over time with our kids, more experiential. All right, that conclude, that's all, that's a lot. And let's not lose sight of the highlight, Certified Nursing Assistant Training Program. We have a BNAP program that we're going to be rolling out in a big partnership. So we're very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good, thank you, Dr. Beavis. All right. Okay, our next item is City of Evanston, the Public Health, the E Plan. We have a presentation.
I can introduce this.
Yes.
So we have Kristin Meyer from the Evanston Public Health Department, who will share some data that's been collected regarding the racial disparities in health in Evanston. As a part of Cradle to Career, I heard the data, I've seen this data. And I know Monique was there in a different capacity, but I had to get this data in front of the Board because it's overwhelmingly compelling and it's very emotional, right? As I sat and heard the information, I could feel my heart racing. And as the Board considers your process for your goals and begin to think about your goals and the data that you'll need to consider your goals and what you're going to do with them, this particular presentation is really important. And also compelling because at the end of the presentation, some of the strategic priorities directly align with some of the work they were already doing here at ETHS. And the information actually supports and covers Goals 1, 2 and 4, your current goals, 1, 2 and 4. So with that said, I'm going to have Kristin to start and share what you have.
Great, thank you so much for having me tonight. And as Dr. Campbell said, I'm going to be presenting findings from our E Plan, which is our community health assessment that the Health Department does every five years. And we approached it a little bit differently this time around. In past community health assessments, we've really focused on kind of individual health conditions and the behaviors that contribute to them. So our priorities were things like obesity and, you know, looking at diet and exercise. What we increasingly understand in public health is that actually the health opportunities that we have that shape our well-being are very much defined by the living conditions and environments around us. The physical environment, whether it's safe to send our kids out to play, whether there's safe housing, the economic and educational environment, of course, the social environment, interactions with our institutions like law enforcement and government. And if, and because those things have an outsized impact in shaping our health, those are the areas that we really need to focus on to understand what's driving well-being in Evanston and beyond. And those are also the areas that we need to focus on changing because if we change those living environments and living conditions, we will see improvement across all kinds of health conditions. Another thing that we did a little bit differently in this E Plan was that we used to only be able to look at data at the city level. And now we can look at the neighborhood level. So I know everybody's familiar with thinking about Evanston in terms of wards, but just to orient you to this data, a lot of government data is available by Census Tracts. And so I have outlined and read kind of the 5th Ward area, which is the focus of a lot of our findings in this health assessment. And that corresponds quite well with Census Tract 8092. So starting with life expectancy. As I said, we used to only be able to present data, you know, kind of stopping at the city level. And it's really dangerous to do that because you get a very distorted picture of what health looks like if you only look at Evanston as an average. In the U.S., the average U.S. citizen lives to about 79 years old. If we stopped at the Evanston average, we would pat ourselves on the back and say that we're doing well. But then when we look by Census Tract and by neighborhood, we can see that there's a dramatic difference in life expectancy based on where we live. So a 13-year life expectancy difference in two Census Tracts that border each other. And we know that this pattern that we see here was set into play by the historic decisions that the City of Evanston and financial institutions, real estate and other policies and institutions have set into play many years ago. And so we see this life expectancy map again and this time placed right by our redlining map from 1935. And what we can see here is that the area that was redlined back almost 100 years ago that we decided to concentrate black residents in and disinvest in, we see in this life expectancy map and kind of consistently throughout all of our data that we have concentrated poor health and economic disadvantage and harm in this area. Also, another pattern was set into play wherein the areas that you see in blue and green in this redlining map were the areas that were kind of labeled most desirable by banks and real estate agents. And so that was, i.e., you know, the whitest, most affluent neighborhoods that were kind of set aside for a lot of investment. And what we see too is that that pattern still plays out where we see concentrated health, wealth and privilege along the north side and along kind of the lakefront area of Evanston. And so while this history has, you know, happened a long time ago, it's still very much being borne out. And we can see proof of that when we look at our current levels of segregation in the City of Evanston. So in Evanston, we all pride ourselves on being a diverse community, and we are. But when we look at a neighborhood level and we look at the distribution of white residents and non-white residents, what we can see is that diversity is not distributed equally throughout Evanston. So we have areas, you know, that are over 85% white. And then again, here, kind of in the 5th Ward area, we have, you know, 11% white residents in this area. And again, you know, kind of looking at the map of where redlining took place, we can see that that legacy very much continues. And so racism is not something that's just in the past, but something that we're, you know, actively perpetuating today in very problematic ways. So again, thinking about if living conditions really shape our health and well-being, we need to understand what that looks like for our Evanston residents. And we can start with median household income because in our country, income is one of the best predictors of someone's eventual health and quality of life and length of life. And again, we kind of see the same pattern of the tyranny of the average, if you will. So that if we only compared ourselves to the U.S., we would say that we're doing well, that Evanston looks like it's affluent. But then if we look neighborhood by neighborhood, we see a very different picture of inequity emerge wherein we have neighborhoods that there's an over $100,000 difference in median household income. So very, very dramatic difference in access to resources. And this follows along the pattern of race too, unsurprisingly, since we saw in the map how segregated we are. You know, Evanston, again, median household income is about $79,000. And when we break that down by our major racial categories, we can see when we compare to the Illinois and the U.S., rates that only non-Hispanic white households are faring better than the U.S. and state median household incomes. And in fact, our non-Hispanic white families are, you know, faring so well for income that it's artificially kind of inflating the picture for all households. So notably, for example, black median household income is less than half of what non-Hispanic white households are making. And very sadly, this pattern holds for our children too. And so in Evanston, we have about half the child poverty rate as the nation. But what we see when we look neighborhood by neighborhood is that we have areas where child poverty is virtually nonexistent. And then we have areas where over one in four children are living in poverty, again, right here in the 5th Ward. And, you know, obviously, all of this plays into educational equity as well. And so I know that this chart is probably one that you've seen before because it comes from the Illinois Report Card. And this is 3rd grade English Language Arts Reading Proficiency. And so about half of our 3rd graders in 2019 were reading proficiently. And then when we break that down, either by race or by income or by housing status, we see dramatic inequities really emerge wherein, you know, being low-income is a strong predictor of not being able to read in 3rd grade and being homeless as well. And then looking at housing affordability, I think we could all agree that Evanston is facing a housing crisis, even pre-pandemic, and certainly it's gotten worse. So when we're looking at excessive housing costs, this is households who are spending 30% or more of their household income on housing costs, so either mortgage or rent, utilities, things like that. And again, dramatic inequity across the board in Evanston wherein, in the 5th Ward here, we're seeing half of all families are spending a third or more of their household income on housing costs. We can also look at this further and look at families who are spending more than half of their income, and that's about a third of families here in Census Tract 8092. And so, you know, when we think about why this matters for health, of course, you know, when we're spending that much of our income on housing, that's that much less that we have to spend on childcare, on groceries, on education, all the other things that we need to live and thrive. We can also look at kind of distribution of natural resources and different natural assets in Evanston. So this is a tree canopy coverage map. And what we see here is that we also have not evenly distributed our natural resources. And particularly problematic is that what we have concentrated in Census Tract 8092 are a lot of environmental hazards, like the waste transfer station or, you know, Emerson Street is a very busy corridor for truck traffic. We've got the tape coat factory. So we've got a lot of air quality hazards and some of the least tree canopy coverage in this area. And kind of all throughout Western Evanston, we see that we're underserved by our tree canopy coverage. And so an area that we really need to improve upon because trees are not only beautiful and not only support air quality, but there's also a lot of research to show that they support good mental health, lower energy costs if you're, if you have more shade, higher property values, things like that. And then getting into health outcomes, I'm just going to show you one. But this is mental health. And this map really, you know, follows, all the health data that we have in the E Plan report follows kind of the same pattern that we've kind of consistently seen throughout these maps. But this is poor mental health. So adults who are reporting that more than two weeks out of the last month, they've experienced poor mental health. And what we see here is that, again, Evanston doing a little bit better than the state if you just stopped there. But then when we look neighborhood by neighborhood, we see that the highest burden of mental health is actually in the north. health is actually in the northwestern campus, which I think could speak to our adolescent mental health crisis, which I'm sure that you're all very familiar with in this room, and that probably resonates quite a bit. It may also be that Northwestern students have less stigma in reporting mental distress. But then the other area where we see the second highest rate of mental distress is, again, in Census Tract 8092, where we also have the highest rate of economic distress. And again, the literature really supports that economic distress and mental distress are very closely linked. And then thinking about access to mental health services being a lot lower for low-income folks, we really see how this problem is being magnified. And then I just wanted to share very quickly, I don't think this is in your packet, but we, in addition to collecting a lot of quantitative data and mapping patterns throughout Evanston, we also did a lot of community input. And so I wanted to share some of the things that our youth contributed to this process. And I think that they'll probably, I've heard some of them tonight already, and I think that they'll resonate with what you hear from your youth as well, but curious. The first and foremost is opportunities for employment and workforce development, particularly those that don't necessarily require a traditional college pathway, but making sure that everybody has workforce development opportunities, whether you're college-bound or not. Mental health services was the biggest health concern that came up, both for adults and for adolescents. And within mental health services, youth identified specifically a really strong need for affordable, accessible, and culturally relevant providers. So providers that look like them, that speak their language, that understand the trauma of immigration or other experiences that those youth are going through. So hard enough to get any kind of mental health access, but really, really hard to get mental health access that feels relevant to the struggles that our youth are facing. Kind of along those lines, we heard a lot about wanting representation among adult role models, both teachers, social workers, wanting to get workforce development mentorship from people that looked like the students. And then safe spaces to gather, this is something where we've really seen recreation opportunities dry up for our youth. There's not a lot of free places where youth can hang out and not be afraid of the police being called or things like that. And so safe, supportive places for youth where, first of all, they can just gather and be young people and be with their friends, but then where they can also connect to healthy adult role models and resources. Transportation came up as a big barrier for our youth, so they would like to see better connection to public transit. And then neighborhood-based resources, they'd like to see libraries in their neighborhoods. They would like to see a 5th Ward school, that came up frequently as well. Youth were really excited about the Robert Crown facility, but for the youth who didn't live very close by, they would like to see facilities like that in their own neighborhoods as well. And then, you know, youth continually impressed me in how much they're thinking structurally and systemically. And so they also identified bigger issues, like how affordable housing is affecting their community and their families, and how the lack of services for undocumented immigrants is impacting their fellow residents and their families as well. And so they identified the need to make improvements in those services as well. So just a couple takeaways. Quality of life varies very widely by neighborhood. We see consistently throughout the data disproportionate harm to both Census Tract 8092 and to the Black community in general, and that unfortunately, that that was not just kept in the past, but is something where we're continuing to see disinvestment and segregation that really requires urgent action and change to stop and to go in a different direction. So some of the strategic priorities that the Health Department has identified out of this data process to focus on for the next five years, that we hope the community will join us in, are first and foremost, addressing racial and health inequity, and then mental health and emotional well-being, which was at a crisis level pre-pandemic, but certainly has been exacerbated since then, so something that we really need to get a handle on. And then finally, climate resilience and environmental justice, and specifically within this, thinking about environmental racism and making sure that we're concentrating environmental assets and doing appropriate, responsible green development across our neighborhoods. So that was just a really quick run-through of some of the findings, but I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any other information.
Thank you so much. That is amazing. Quite a lot here. I'm real excited about this, and it's devastating. So I guess what I want to say is, it's in writing. It's what I've felt, what I've known, it's my experience, my life, and here it is. So I appreciate this a lot. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, Board, questions? Pat?
Yeah, thank you. This was incredibly informative and does align a lot with what we think about and what we're looking at, both in terms of data and actual people. And I'm curious, I don't know exactly when the data was collected and how you asked the questions, but I'm wondering if you have a slice around both physical health and mental health related specifically to COVID? Because as we were going through that in the moment, we were getting our own data of what was going on in mental health, how many families were losing people, who those families were, but it was more sort of, we're just dealing with it at the moment. And I'm curious if you had maybe a perspective from what that looked like in Evanston?
Yeah, that's a great question. I would say that that data is mostly in the qualitative realm. One thing I didn't mention about this data is that all of the data that I have shown you is pre-pandemic data. So just because of the lag in data collection and reporting, but that shows us our pre-pandemic levels of inequity. And of course, we know that a lot of these problems have been exacerbated since then. So unfortunately, it was very hard to, it's hard to capture really good data, like in real time. So we definitely heard a lot about increasing family trauma and the mental health impact of that. And certainly, we also heard a lot about the physical health impact of that as well. And so we'll have to see in subsequent years how that plays out in our data. But again, it's more qualitative, you know, community input to capture what the impact of the pandemic was at this point.
But I think you raise an interesting point, that if these were the inequities before we even had a worldwide pandemic, it just stands to reason, and also based on qualitative data that we collected in the moment, that these numbers minimally stayed inequitable and probably got a lot worse. So, okay. Thank you very much.
I would agree. I would agree. Can only imagine.
Oh, go ahead, Chris. Question?
So we're just seeing all of this for the first time tonight, or at least most of us. I think some others have seen it in other contexts, but we didn't have the report in advance, so it's a little, it's kind of hitting you.
Yeah, it's a lot of information.
But I do remember the survey, I remember going to a committee meeting for one of these prior five-year things, when Avonda Thomas was the head of Public Health for the City of Evanston. I remember talking to her about this topic. And so some of it, the idea behind it was at least familiar to me. And it's just incredible, this is just an incredible wealth of information. And though it's just shining a light on really disturbing bits of information, and I think it's incredibly important. So I have a couple of just random, unconnected reactions and questions. The first is a question about whether there is some small bright side when we're talking about how COVID, the impact of COVID, is only going to make all of this worse. Actually, there was a recent piece in the New York Times and other news outlets around childhood poverty across the country, and how the trend for childhood poverty has been, not exactly reversed, but it's made, there's been enormous strides in reducing childhood poverty, in part because of some of the resources provided as a result of the pandemic and other social programs. So I'm a little bit curious, this is a snapshot from pre-pandemic, and every five years, it seems we do a different kind of survey, so we don't even really have great points of comparison. Do you have a sense of whether childhood poverty in Evanston has seen any decline? Because it appears to be a pretty positive development across the country.
Yeah, you know, I can't speak to that, although I could certainly pull that data. So I'm unsure, but you're raising a really important question. And I'm curious too, what the lasting impact of those investments will be, whether they will stay, and whether we will see, I mean, it would be wonderful to see.
Well, and it's also a matter of connecting up childhood poverty to everything else, to the health outcomes, to the education outcomes, to everything. It's not just a matter of walking around with another dollar in your pocket, that's not really what we're measuring. We're measuring what that does for a person who has an extra dollar in their pocket. So anyway, that was just a little attempt to look at for something bright. My other question, I'll have a couple others, but one of the things that Avonda, I remember, and I know she's been gone for a while, but I just remember having some very compelling conversations with her about some of these things, including violence, gun violence in particular, as a public health issue. And I don't see that really addressed on the priorities. And I know there's so many things that we can prioritize, so I'm not saying it's more important than anything else, but I would appreciate, in light of everything that's gone on in our community, hearing more from you about violence, gun violence in particular as a public health issue or threat.
Yes. And a point well taken. That data is in the full report, where we saw, just as we all know, just a huge outlier year in terms of homicides, both in 2021 and now.
And suicides, probably.
Yeah, yeah. And that data is there as well. And so violence could very well have been one of our priorities. I think what we decided to do instead is to fold that, you'll notice that the priority of mental health was called "mental health and emotional well-being," to address the trauma and need for community healing that Evanston so greatly has as a result, not only of the pandemic, but also of all the community violence that we have seen in recent years. And so violence reduction is certainly under that bucket as something that we're thinking of really carefully and needing to focus on.
Yeah, I know we're thinking about it a lot, and I don't really have any concrete suggestions in that regard, except to say that I think we all need to be on that same page together in some way. You know, okay, and then lastly, the health, there are a couple pages, I don't know if you put them up here, but they're in the packet on health outcomes, you know, issues like diabetes and heart issues.
Yep.
I would just say, number one, I think when you call out diabetes, you should distinguish between type 1 and type 2, because they're really very different. But to that point, type 1 is an autoimmune disease, and when you're looking at health outcomes, I think looking at autoimmune disease, particularly in people of color, I'm sort of curious about that, and whether that's something that you've examined as a public health department, because that is, can be, a bigger problem in communities of color.
Yeah, so I'll say that, you know, the inclusion of, and I switched the slides just because I thought that some of the youth input might be particularly interesting for you. But the diabetes is just one example of the consistent pattern that we see across all cardio-metabolic outcomes in Evanston, wherein we see, again, concentrated disease burden in Census Tract 8092. In terms of diabetes type 1, we actually don't have very good, I don't know that we have any data on that. And also, I'll say about the diabetes data, if you're looking at that, we also know throughout national literature that that number is often very under-reported.
Oh, totally.
Because you have to have insurance or to go to the doctor to be diagnosed with diabetes, and to understand that diagnosis, and then be able to report it in a health survey that you have that diagnosis. And so there's actually estimates that that number may be twice as high, kind of across the country, and probably in Evanston as well. But in terms of type 1 diabetes, we don't have good data on that.
Lastly, I guess I've just, you know, you were asked to come here to share this information with us after others connected with the high school heard it and were impressed by it. And so I'd love to hear from you, from your vantage point with the city, what should our two organizationism, we're governmental entities, governmental units, I guess, what should we be doing as governmental units together to address this, from your perspective? And whether or not you even think that that aligns with what you may or may not know what we're doing over here? I'd be very curious.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that that's something where, you know, that's one other thing that's really different about our health assessment process this time around, is we've, and I know this is something that Avonda Thomas-Smith really was trying to get started to, is thinking in a public health system, and thinking about how our entire community needs to collaborate across these really deeply systemic issues. It is not the city that has all the solutions to these issues, and it really is going to take really concerted effort and collaboration across all of our major institutions and community partners and residents to address some of these things. And so absolutely, I see ETHS and District 65 as being really, really key players, particularly where it affects youth health. But I mean, even more broadly than that, I think one of the biggest takeaways from this process is that we have an urgent need to build community wealth, and education is, of course, key to that. And so in the E-Plan, in the full E-Plan report, what we've done is, we have the start of some community action plans, where we've highlighted some promising practices and some of the economic and workforce and some of the economic and workforce development activities that I know that ETHS is connected to are highlighted there. But that is only a start because I think the next step is really talking to our community partners about fleshing out those plans and, and, you know, kind of collectively committing to them.
Can, can you send the board the, the full E-Plan report a link?
Yep.
So that we could access that?
Yes.
And then secondly, are we, are you, are representatives from the city's Department of Public Health connected with our Evanston Citywide Collective Impact Cradle to Career effort? Are you sitting on any of those committees, for example? Not to put you on the spot, I've just been going in those meetings for 10 years and we need to get, you know, everybody involved.
Yeah, we're, yeah, this, this process, we're, and we're in a lot of conversations about how we can align the, the E-Plan process with Evanston Cradle to Career and create metrics for collective impact.
Perfect, that's exactly what I want to hear. And I also just wanted to point out that, I mean, the high school is not a healthcare provider. We don't get funding for healthcare, we get funding for education.
Yep.
So it's, you know, we, we have to work together on that because, you know, we, we have some, the physical space, we have all these certain resources here, but, but that, we're not set up to be the healthcare provider. We can do it around the edge, but that, it can't just be us.
Agree.
Okay, I'm sorry, I went way too long on that. Thank you.
Yes, certainly, Monique.
So the interesting thing is Marcus and I heard this presentation through Cradle to Career. And when Kristin presented it, many of us in that room, we received the entire presentation. I think you probably have a bunch more data, right? But what you presented to us was enough to shock us and jolt us into a position of, we kind of knew this, but now we, we know, you know, we have the numbers and this is our Evanston. And, and so Kristin has actually shared this with my leadership team because I want them to make decisions at McCall YMCA that are well-informed and intentional. And it is my hope that as we start thinking about goals, that we remember this information and we can layer a pandemic on top of it. It doesn't get any better. And there are ways to connect the dots. You would be surprised how many students that live in the fifth ward are not aware of our health clinic. So although we don't, we're not in the business of, of public health or, you know, taking care of, of that aspect, access and information is still a void in certain pockets of our community. So to think that it exists here and a student, and we know we're, we're doing extremely well, the best that we can to make sure that all students are aware. But when we think about that, we've, we've connected a dot, so we might not be in the business, but the business is, is inside our school. So, you know, I think there are ways that we can use this information just to validate and be more bold and more intentional about the work we do. And I will share that Cradle is looking at how we can be more intentional about, I want to get it right, be patient with me, Census Track 8092. Because that's where the largest, you could just go inside that community and, and, you know, be a researcher and have a field day. I mean, there's, everything is there. So it is, it's, it's information that we should know so that we're not consumed by this building, but that our students leave this building and they go into segments of this community, into families, into systems, and here's the result. So, yeah, so I, you know, I appreciate you for going out. The other thing is I, I don't show this information ahead of time because I, I need people to see it with fresh eyes. So I, I know there's a bunch more information, like I said, Kristin, that you haven't been able to show, and you've been on a world tour, a community tour, hoping that, that folks understand that in order for Evanston to be the Evanston they proclaim to be, then it's going to take everybody and every one of us and every system and every organization. So I, I appreciate you for doing this. And, you know, I just hope that we carry this with us throughout the entire year.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. And, you know, just, just to your point about, you know, using this data, I think we, we really, really want this to not be a stagnant report, like most city reports that would, would sit on a shelf, but really try to, to put this data in the hands of our community organizations who are writing grants to show, you know, that, that there is a lot of need in Evanston that you wouldn't see if you only looked at higher level numbers. Or to, to put these numbers also in the hands of our residents so that they can go, you know, to city council and advocate for what their neighborhood needs, so that our city council members can use this data in, in making decisions. So we're really, really trying to make sure that this data does not get lost in this report, but actually is living and really informing what we do next as a city.
Yeah.
Can I add a couple of things?
Certainly.
So one, I, you know, I thank you as well, and I, I don't think this would lessen the impact. I would love for there to be an opening on the assets of our community, from the tremendous number of languages spoken, to the work, to the culture, just, and I'm guessing you maybe do that in another setting, but I think that asset frame is so important. And I also think about how, I wonder how many school, how many of our citizens are employed in our schools? And, because I'm thinking quite a few, especially that are part of the Track 8092. And so that closed system that we've created is unethical. And then I think about how many people often who are white, who live here, who are so excited to live in a mixed, racially mixed space, I think about, like, we could add a tax, you know? Like, how could we make that have value and not devalue our communities? Because it's really quite extraordinary to know that we live so close and yet, I wonder what is the psychological breakdown when you're talking about mental health that allows for people to live that close to one another and yet have babies that are hungry?
Yeah.
And so I just am so curious about that.
That's right.
But thank you.
Yeah, I think that that's probably a really, you know, a unique trauma that Evanstonians, you know, experience in, in living so close to extreme affluence. Yeah. And I, like, just, just to your point about assets, that is a shortcoming of this assessment process. Very few data are collected on what's going well in a community, unfortunately, and completely agree that we have many assets in Evanston that we need to highlight and we also need to show reasons for hope, you know, that, and, and that we, we do have the resources here to change this narrative if we, if we, you know, really care and want to, right? We first have to be honest about it. And so, so that is definitely an area for improvement, I would say, moving forward in our community health assessments, that we really need to do a better job of finding a way to capture community assets. And I think that your, your point is very well taken.
So just thank you. And I would wonder if we needed a little interest convergence, if we looked at our white communities that are suffering from mental health and/or various other health problems and tied that to racism as well? Because I think the impact is great and once people can understand how much those who have more wealth and power are also negatively impacted by racism, from anorexia to, you know, suicide attempts, et cetera, we may see that converge and then work towards what we're talking about as these next steps to eradicating that.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, one thing that we see in the literature, kind of looking at health on an international lens, is countries with greater equity, income equality and health equity, everyone is faring better than, than countries where we have, you know, strong levels of inequity, so that everyone really does fare better, where we all do better when we all do better.
Excellent. I, you know, once again, I believe that this, this information, this report certainly does inform the work that we're doing here. And, and I agree with you, having these communities, agencies, Northwestern, ETHS, District 65, the city, the hospitals work in a collaborative way on whatever our work happens to be. It is really our, that's our hope, that everyone will get involved because ours, we know our students are in school for the hours that they're in school, what is it, six hours a day or a little bit? And then, you know, there's a lot that they, they leave here and they experience, and this captures a lot of what they experience, we know that. So, so thank you so much for coming.
Of course.
Thank you for, for going around and spreading this news. This is worth spreading. And I will assure you, at least for me, and I will encourage the board, to make sure this is information that we hold on to. So in the next few months, when we look at our goals and that whole process, you know, we will have this document with us and the link that you will send.
Great. Thank you so much.
Can I say one more thing?
Certainly.
Kristin, I want to thank you. I know this is not easy information for you to share. And, and you are a representative of the City of Evanston, you are not the City of Evanston Health and Human Department, right? You know, you don't make any of the decisions, you know, on the council and anything, but I know that this is difficult for you. And, and I appreciate you sharing this data, knowing that it reflects a community that you're not part of in some way. And so I, I just want to acknowledge that and your willingness to share it and to get it into many, in front of many people so that we can make some of those changes. So it takes a lot from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Man, she's pregnant.
Oh, my goodness.
With baby.
I did notice that.
Yeah, we don't want to add that.
All right. Okay, our next item is safety procedures update.
Yes, we're going to have Dr. Kenzie and Dr. Robinson and Matt Driscoll. Dr. Robinson, our Associate Principal for Ed Services, and Matt Driscoll, our Director of Safety, to come with a update on safety procedures. I think we originally shared a bit of an update, some information in May, and this is a continuation of that discussion and conversation.
Good evening. Should have cleared my voice before I came up. As Dr. Campbell said, this is an update from the information that we presented back in June 22. First, I want to thank my team. We've been working literally daily to accomplish a lot of the tasks and recommendations from our provider who gave us the safety updates and recommendations. So I just wanted to name them. We meet daily. It's our operations team who includes Clarence Gregory and John Crawford, Robbie Brown, Mike Corcoran and Jeff Oathouse from our IT departments, and also Matt Driscoll and Terrence Dobie from the safety departments. And when I say we meet daily, we meet daily. We have dozens of recommendations that we had, and we've been kind of ticking them off. And it's been a good conversation, a good practice for us to, to really deep down, and I think I have now gained the skills to become an assessment person myself. So it's been, it's been really good. A couple of the other things we wanted to just talk about, just to highlight, and I will take a sip. Some things look very different this year than it did last year, and that was very purposeful, including signage, information that we're being very explicit about what to bring to school, what not to bring to school. And we've really tried to improve our messaging with what the safety expectations are. Just last week, we are also expanding some of the safety audits where we went over to the Evanston Day School and also our Transition House, where we were able to do a deep dive to see where the, what we've learned through our recommendation and kind of practice with our own team with the help of, from Evanston Police Department and Detective Spells. So that was a really good exercise as well. We continue to improve our safety, not only externally, but with our messaging on the inside as well.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. I also want to echo, when Dr. Robinson is talking about those daily meetings, there has been such a tremendous flurry of activity, but you all know, in a building where there's 4,300 people every day, that level of collaboration requires a lot. So it's been tremendous work. So thank you to the entire team. One of the things that we wanted to reiterate, you all received the memo and have reviewed that information, we wanted to reiterate a few pieces as we think about how we're moving forward and the urgency of change that we all experience, our commitment to well-being, hearing Kristin talk about this, that, you know, we all do better when we all do better. And so we are so committed to this. Dr. Robinson, I already spoke to the, the ways that we've put up signage about what not to bring to ensure that all of us remain safe together at ETHS and how that's really a collective obligation. That is not about ETHS staff or administrators or students or parents and families, it's our entire community. It's all of ETHS and all of our Evanston township, entire Evanston community. And so we think about the message of Acknowledge Care Tell, which is an ongoing message and thinking about our, that's an obligation for each one of us, to stand up and act preventively, whether that's knowledge of weapons, whether that's a concern about a suicide risk or potential harm to others or homicide risk. So we are grateful for the many ways that already happens in this building and the many ways that families reach out, community members, and we just urge everyone to continue to do that because that is our collective obligation to really come together and be in solidarity for healing, which is part of our theme as we focus. That includes all of the interventions that we continue to focus on. We were talking, and there's so many technical steps that have been done, and we continue to focus on the emotional well-being and connection, whether that's around anxiety, whether that's around transit in the community and making sure to refer to community agencies if someone feels unsafe in the community, and all the problem solving that's happening. One of the things that we wanted to know also is looking forward to the Listening and Learning Tours that Dr. Campbell will be going on through the community, whether that's from our, our staff talking circles that we've already engaged in, our, the walkabouts with students and talk backs in the community and that, all of those opportunities. That's really going to be a fantastic opportunity to explore all of perspectives, input and options about how we think about safety measures and how we're looking forward, and that includes input and pers- input and perspectives on things like scanning and metal detectors. So we're really looking forward to engaging in those conversations. And lastly, just wanted to note, when we think about prevention, that relationships that we build, those relationships in the community, the relationships at E T H S, we know, and we see it every day from our tremendous staff, and within the community, that those those relationships are truly acts of prevention. So in addition to all of those safety measures, we know prevention is one of them, and relationships.
Finally, I'll just add, you know, the audit is only as good as, you know, what we do to kind of, you know, do our self-assessment. So as a part of that, we are committed to continue to looking and assessing our practices and our building, and we're going to continue to do it. So I just wanted to speak to that commitment. And we are here to answer any questions, or provide any other information that the board or anybody else may have.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. It's, it's a lot, and we've been through a lot. And I I even was thinking, as you were talking, you know, we are where we are, and the world is changing, and we keep having so many, hearing about so many incidents. So your piece is important, because the safety of our students is the most important thing right now that I can think of. We can't really expect or ask them to learn if they don't feel safe, if they're not safe, and our community is feeling unsafe right now. Hearing Kristin's report, there's just some, there's a lot going on. But first, I'd like to open it up to the board. Does anybody have questions, Gretchen, you like to?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much, because it's important work, as we all know. I also wanted to highlight that the Ed Red kickoff luncheon this year is going to include a panel discussing school safety. So you may consider, you know, some of our administrators may want to come, certainly the board, you're welcome to come as well to that kickoff lunch.
Thanks. Other board members? So I did ask the board to come ready to talk, or if you choose to talk, about some of the activities going on, or the incidents, events in our community. And I don't quite know how to start that. I could start it, maybe I should, because I did prepare something, and and I I do feel like, you know, at E T H S, we don't shy away from difficult topics. So this has got to be pretty up there top in one of the most difficult topics. If there's a topic that makes us feel uncomfortable, we still go there, because we recognize that it's important for our students, for us, to really dive into into these topics. So I know that there's been a lot of, a lot happening, and our students have been threatened, they've been traumatized, they've been hurt, and some have even been killed. So I just want to put out there that that's been happening. As educators, we've lived with the reality, and parents have also lived with the reality that there, there's a lot happening, and gun violence and shootings seem to just be a part of our community right now. The number of shootings have increased in this community, and has put us all on edge. It's not just Evanston, it's certainly nationwide. It's like an epidemic. We've already kind of talked about that and alluded to that tonight. Guns outside, in our community, guns in schools, these are happening, these are happening. And the shootings result in homicides, suicides, unintentional shootings, people getting hurt. They impact our student body, because, you know, we know our kids are scared, we know our staff is scared, I'm scared, so I admit to that. So, you know, for many of us, I joined the board in 2013, I can't believe it's been that long, and I've been, I joined because I want to make sure that I do what I can do to help and support our youth. I think that we, as individuals, we, as a board collectively, as a community, as a school, believe that we have the ability to be the be the solution, and that we can take on just about anything to ensure a more equitable academic and social emotional experience for students when they're in high school. But then I get preoccupied, at least lately, with thoughts of this violence, and how everyday trauma and racism impact our students. I lay awake at night trying to figure out what I can do to stop it, ask myself how I can have a major impact, what's the solution? And I can't come up with any one thing, and I guess that's the way it is. It's not an easy, easy solution, because with every incident, there's family trauma. With every incident, there's all these underlying backstories, the nuanced stories, the circumstances. We need our whole community to buy into this effort. As Kristin said, we need every agency, every, every church, every synagogue, every individual. We just need everybody to not only talk about this, but recognize it, and if we don't even talk about it, if they don't, if we don't recognize this as problematic, then we'll never solve it. So we have to have everybody in our community. So I'm glad you brought up Dr. Campbell's Listening and Learning Series, that's really important, and I really hope that our community comes out for those meetings. It's really important. I, I know that sometimes, in the past, we've not had real good attendance, but I'm just really hoping that during the next few months, when we really try to hear from community members, and staff, and parents, and students, you're going to, you're going to get a lot, and and I I'm excited about that. We, we just need to adopt some type of approach that has been proven effective. We talk about approaches such as keeping the, keeping guns out of the hands of people who shouldn't have them in the first place. I mean, that's effective. You mentioned relationships. Relationships are hugely effective. Just crisis intervention programs, trauma-informed emergency planning, you know, all of those things are extremely effective. Without a doubt, we have to take the necessary steps to make our schools safe for students, so that our students can come and not be scared, and can come and not feel they have to protect themselves, because now they do, we know that, and that they can feel safe. I also want to just, a shout out to our, our Safety and Security Department. I know that they work hard to try to make this place safe, and I am impressed personally in just hearing their part in all of these incidents, Matt. I just really, really feel that that group, they're, they're really on top of things, and don't get enough recognition for what they do. I know that we're really careful about who they are and what what they, what they do, and try to get them trained so that they don't inflict any undue harm to students, particularly students of color. We're not looking to over-police students, and and they're aware of this as well. It's really complicated, indeed, it's very complicated. I just want to make sure that this is on the minds of our whole community. I'm not going to try to make this pleasant, or pretty, or dress this up, because that's not what this is. This is very, very scary, this is very serious, this is very dangerous, and I just really hope that we come up with solutions and think of alternatives as a community, that we are all thinking about this. So this is really important.
So the last thing I want to do is talk about this. This is, this is hard, and it's emotional. Because of all the reasons you stated, we have students that have been caught in the middle of all the the violence, the trauma, and if they haven't experienced it here in Evanston, they've seen it on the news, they've seen it, you know, in Highland Park, they've seen it other places, and, and so we are having to deal with many layers of trauma that exists, and, and it brings us to wanting to protect our children, and our staff, and our community. And I am really, and I'm, I'm a, you know, I pride myself in being a youth professional. I'm extremely passionate about, you know, youth, and will advocate for them and all that, and I'm lost. I have no idea what the answer is, and for that reason, because I don't know, or I don't have a solution, I can't figure it out alone. So no one in this community should be left to try to figure out what the solutions are to turn our community around. This is not the Evanston I grew up in. This is not the Evanston I was raised in, that I was born in. So it hits me different, because I moved back to Evanston to raise my son, and he graduated from E T H S, but he's concerned about his well-being, and now the well-being of his son that he's raising in this community. So I'm, I'm concerned, deeply concerned. There is this, and I want to share this, and I'm not going to speak that long, because I, I don't really have words, I, we are doing what we have to do. And so I thank you for meeting every day to figure this out, and being thoughtful with the process. We are absolutely doing what we have to do, and until the violence stops, and our students don't feel threatened in school, or when they leave here, it is our obligation, our responsibility, to take care of them while they're here with us. So, community, if we can figure out how to stop that, then, then we can change how we address it here. But until then, we're going to do everything we need to do to make sure on our watch that they are okay. But this absolutely goes out to my colleagues in my community, and I heard this from another leader, so I won't claim this, this is not mine, I didn't discover this. There is a tribe in Africa called the Masai, and whose traditional greeting to each other is Kunsirian and Gari. It means, "And how are the children?" That's how they greet each other. They do not ask each other, "How are you?", or "How's your day?", but rather, they ask about the next generation. And it pains me to say, regardless of what color your skin is, how much money you make, where you live, that our children are not well. And I'll say that it is not their fault. So, there, I said it. It's not their fault. So we're responsible for leading the next generation, and we've forgotten the entire generation, because it doesn't happen in our backyard, and now we are making decisions based on what we fail to do. So, Marcus, I applaud you for bringing the hard stuff to us, and it is uncomfortable, and I'm glad, because this is not the Evanston I grew up in. And we chose to be here to do the work to make this community and this school better, and it is not always good news, and it's not always a great day. So thank you all.
Pat?
Thanks. Well, first of all, I just, I think I can speak for all of us on the board, that what Pat and Monique just said is, is shared by all of us. And I think that, you know, all of us here on the board, and everyone that works at E T H S, is committed to the safety and well-being of each and every one of our students. And while we think about it, and certainly you all think about it and work on it literally every moment of every day, I really believe that we have to develop a more comprehensive definition of safety, and focus more on the root issues that, of safety, and then do that as a broader community. As Monique and Pat both said, we can't do this alone. This isn't Marcus's job, it's not Keith's job, this is everybody's job in this building, on this board, and in this community. And the challenges and trauma that our students face are obviously having a detrimental impact on their lives, and on our community as a whole. And those things are not just one thing, but they're racism, it's community and family crisis, it's feelings of hopelessness, it's feelings of being other and not having a belonging or a place. And kids all over the city feel that way, and all over the country, but all over the city. And that is the root of school discipline problems, that is the root of community violence. And I think that, just, we can look at one simple but horrifying bit of data that we hear from, from Taya every year, that the number of screens for suicide has gone up dramatically, the number of students seeking social work and counseling services has gone up dramatically. And so this is really an indication of what is under the surface for our kids. And all of those of us who have our own children, or work with young children, remember those days when they hit their sibling, or they throw a toy. And you look at that little three-year-old, and you say, hmm, what's going on, right? It's not about they don't like their sibling, it's not about they don't want that toy anymore. Are they tired? Are they hungry? And we address the root problem. Obviously, you deal with the behavior, but you deal with the root problem. Well, older kids, even adults, aren't that much different. What you see in front of you is not necessarily what is really going on. And I think that we really need to understand and address those root issues that are causing the behavior of young people in our community. And, you know, I, I think even when kids are getting into trouble, and maybe especially when kids are getting into trouble. when kids are getting into trouble. I was telling Marcus a story about a student that I worked with when I, when I taught high school. This kid got shot and he came back to school and he was, you know, he did all these things and whatever, but he was scared to death. He was scared to death. And he had done some things he shouldn't do, believe me. He did a lot of things he shouldn't have done. But we got to get beyond that. Not to say that's not important, because it is, but we've got to get beyond that to the, the underneath, the trauma, the sadness, the fear that is behind negative behavior. And I think sometimes it's easy for adults, particularly with students, with young people, to sort of look at the rules. There's a negative behavior, you breached this rule, and now here's the consequence for breaking that rule. It's sort of a law and order approach. But there are many, there are many components to keeping students safe and to supporting their wellbeing. But, and others have talked about this, and I, I so appreciate our ETHS leaders and staff because you really understand this, that really having relationships with our students and understanding their lives and, you know, giving them a space and a place and a person to come to when they need help and when they're, when they are having a hard time. Developing those relationships is, in, the research and in my personal experience and in the experience of this building, to me, is the most important way to assure safety, is developing relationships with students. But that takes a lot. That takes having our staff be trained. That takes money to hire more staff. That takes time and attention to talk to students, to listen, to then walk them through what can be very challenging feelings and situations and multiple layers of things that need to be addressed. And I, again, I really appreciate that ETHS is doing these things and understands this, but I think we all need to do more. And I, I also think that we need, we can't just rely on the people who happen to see the young people the most, and that's the schools. We do a lot. We need to do more, but we need, as a community, we can't, we can't separate our kids, their kids. Everybody in this community is our kids. That's why I'm on this board. That's why these other people are on this board. That's why people work in this school, because all these kids are our kids. It's not just about my children who are now graduates of this wonderful place. It's about everybody's kids. And if we can't think like that and we can't act like that, then we need different jobs. We need to go do something else because that's what is going to hap, be required. So I really, I call upon all the elected officials in Evanston to join this group of elected officials and community leaders, residents, Northwestern, everybody. We've got to work on this together. We can't do this alone as individual people or as individual institutions. It's just too big. And the benefit is so amazing, right? These are kids. I'm just, I, I read these stories and I hear all these terrible words used. These are children. These are children, some of them little children. Our kids are bigger, but they're still kids. And I just, as, it haunts me, these stories of these children and the experiences they have haunt me. And, and I'm just one person, but I know that there's others out there who, who share that concern with me. And I really urge all of those leaders to come together and really harness the resources of this town. Monique said it. We all think about this as a great place and we, we've experienced it. Many of us have had the privilege of experiencing it in a very positive way. Then let's do something about it. We, we have to use what we have to support the next generation and we need to do that together.
Thank you, Pat. Gretchen?
So I didn't prepare any remarks, in, in part because I didn't really think I had any great wisdom to share in response to Pat's kind invitation that we all raise our voices against the kind of violence that we're seeing occurring in our community. But then I was thinking on the way over here that I recently filled out a survey that came from City of Evanston Police Department. I don't know if anybody else saw this. I'm the only one who fills out these surveys that keep popping into my email box from everybody. And this one was asking about the services of the police department. What were my concerns? First of all, I wanted to know my, my age, my race, my ward. And once they pinned that down, the questions were hyper-specific to my ward and, and what, what were the priorities of my ward? What, what was the greatest concern? What needed to be taken care of? And I was, I was really put off by that line of questioning. And I was reminded of it, of it again, when we had the presentation from Kristen, the excellent report on our health outcomes. I can't remember, this E-Plan report. And she presented our, the data in the E-Plan report around census tracts and, and showed it as an overlay to our wards in an extremely helpful way. And it reminded me that maybe this survey from the police department was trying to get at something, but I think it, it was approached in such an inartful way. And here's why. I'm, I'm getting to the point. My husband says I tell really, really long, rambling stories, so I'm going to try and hone in here. The point is that the issues that concern me most, that may or may not be relevant to our police department, have nothing to do with which ward I reside in. It, it has to do with the fact that I live in a community and, and things are happening to people in my community. I don't care if they live on the other side of Emerson from where I live. And, and I, i- if that's how we're going to approach problems in this city, then, then we're not going to get to a solution. And, and I made a snide comment at the end of the survey along those lines. Hopefully, somebody will read it at the city. But then I was reminded of it when we had this E-Plan report tonight because I thought, well, you know, we do need to understand and appreciate the different realities that, that people live in, but we need to be so careful that we don't isolate ourselves within those realities. Some people are already living that isolation to their detriment. But I can tell you that I am sure there are people who live in my ward, in my zip code, who look at that map on the E-Plan report or respond to that survey from the police department. And in their head, it may be implicit, it may be more explicit, they're saying to themselves, "That's not my problem because I live here. Nobody fired a gun on my block. I'm not going to go to the place where that gun got fired. I'm never going to have to think about that." And if that's how we're going to think, then, then this is going to continue. We're interconnected and that's what community is all about. And I would argue it's really, as others have pointed out, it's not just about Evanston because this is, you know, happening in other places in the country. We're, we're interconnected and we can't separate ourselves from that. So those are probably too many words to make that fairly straightforward point. But perhaps others will look at that survey or share their thoughts with the City of Evanston. We're with us. I'm open to hearing from people too. I don't have the answer. I just, I, I know that we all need to pay attention and, and hold hands while we're doing it because we're connected.
Thank you.
Gretchen, when you said that, it makes me think too of, I think, if people are saying those things, which I'm sure they are, and if we were to racialize that, if that would be more or less white folks.
Yes, I should have made that probably more explicit.
It's, it's such a bizarre thing, right? So when you mentioned Highland Park, Monique, you know, predominantly white space, that's exactly the space where mass shootings and those specters of evil land. And so the disillusionment that it would not be on my block here is, you know, just that disillusionment. And I know what I'm about to say is probably not legal. I've been waiting to say it. So I think about how we were so, how the country was so challenged during COVID to get kids back in school, primarily because we're the nation's babysitters. And, and I, you know, I understand that as a working parent. But I also think about the power that we have. We could shut down this nation if we really wanted to. If families and schools got together and said, "We won't tolerate this until legislation has been passed and guns have been bought back." We actually have the power to do that. So I'm just curious why we don't and why we continue to put up with what we are putting up with. Because if we really want to change, we can, we can make it happen. So just a little something to think about. I know unions and there's a very, but if enough people go and do, and we have a planned movement, those legal pieces fall apart. So just, just think about that.
Liz?
I appreciate everything everybody has said so far and I'm, I'm glad that my fellow board members have covered several subjects on the subject of gun violence. And I'm grateful to you guys too for your, your work. And these meetings that you're having on a daily basis really show your commitment to making this a safer place. I wrote down my remarks. Evanston has experienced an increase in gun threats and violence recently and it has caused great harm to our community. In addition to those who are victims of gun violence, there are many people impacted by the violence as it ripples through communities. There are many factors that contribute to a culture of gun violence and it's very complicated. And several issues have been brought up tonight. But for me, I want to talk about something dear to my heart about the use of trauma-informed care as both a prevention of violence and a healing tool for those impacted by violence. Experiencing gun violence is trauma and living with the fear of gun violence is also trauma. Many of our students live with this trauma and it impacts every aspect of their lives. Trauma is both the outcome of and the precursor to violence and it creates a vicious cycle. Growing up in the midst of community violence can impact children's social, emotional, behavioral and cognitive development. Community violence can cause victims to live with paralyzing fear and trauma. I pulled this from the City of Chicago website. They have a page on trauma-informed care. And these are the principles of trauma-informed care. Trauma understanding. Through the knowledge and understanding of trauma and stress, we can compassionately take well-informed steps towards wellness. Safety and security. Increasing stability in our lives and having core physical and emotional safety needs met can minimize our stress reactions. Cultural humility and responsiveness. When we are open to understanding cultural differences and respond to them sensitively, we make each other feel understood and wellness is enhanced. Compassion and dependability. When we experience compassionate and dependable relationships, we reestablish trusting connections with others that fosters mutual wellness. Collaboration and empowerment. When we are prepared for and given real opportunities to make choices for our care, ourselves, we feel empowered and can promote our own wellness. And resilience and recovery. When we focus on strengths and develop clear steps we can take towards wellness, we are more likely to be resilient and recover. I was lucky enough to be trained in trauma-informed care through my work with DCFS and so that I can better care for those in my life who've experienced trauma. I invite our community leaders, our teachers, our parents and law enforcement to learn more about trauma-informed care, to better understand our youth who are impacted by violence and how it affects learning and behavior. I also want to invite our community and ETHS to work together to address the systemic issues that contribute to violence. This will take a community-wide effort to work to reduce gun violence and create a safer place to live for our students and their families.
Thank you, Liz. So once again, I can say on behalf of this board that we appreciate the work you're doing. We appreciate those daily meetings. I know they're exhausting. We also appreciate the fact that there is no clear answer. I'm thinking about Hyffit's work, that zone of productive distress, that swigly zone. That's where we are and that's where we need to be. It's a good place to be actually around this topic because it will keep us in a place where we will try and tweak solutions, communicate with each other what's working and what's not, and continue to try to fix this problem. Keith, you have something for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the board for your boldness and your courage and call to action. We certainly appreciate your leadership. And again, we're, we're committed in-house to, to do what we can to keep our students safe.
Thank you. Thank you. How about a five-minute break? How about a five-minute break?
Great idea.
Next item is comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public?
We have no comments from the public this evening.
Okay, super. All right, the next item is FOIAs. There are three?
Yes, there are three. There's one from Reed, one from Weinberg, and one from Gotea.
Okay. All right, those responses are in our packet. All right, so the next item is board committee reports. Are there any board committee reports? Have we had any committee meetings yet? Probably not.
We did. The curriculum.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you saw the result of that. That's my report.
Clever.
I'm serious. It was a good discussion.
It's good.
They put in a lot of work, and I mean, you know, you, you see it. And it's been validated by our student rep that we are paying attention. I think the, the history class, especially the AP class, has been a long time coming. I mean, it's been way overdue, so it's nice to, to see that. But yeah, it was good.
Great. All right. Okay, so it's student board report, Nicole.
Hi, everyone, again. My heart, my heart started beating really fast. But I hope you all are doing well. I really enjoyed listening to all of you talk about just everything that's been going on. It offered like a new view to me because, you know, I, I only have the student view right now, but I'm glad to be able to listen as well. So everything, I guess we just get started then. So the students, everyone is just getting back into the rhythm of school, and it seems, everyone seems to be adjusting well. And it's crazy that we're already four weeks in. I, I don't know, I feel like everything is going so slow, but so fast at the same time. And student union, which I am also a part of in my role, we are currently addressing topics that we had a meeting about. We had students write about issues that they were seeing in the school this new school year. And we're currently like making tallies of the topics and sorting them into kind of groups where it's like things that apply to all students, that all students can benefit from, and versus the, like the cliques of students who may have a stronger voice because of race or maybe like other, other things. And so some of the few things we have are tardy policies and cell phone rules, which are a little on the bottom tier in the other category, but also new lunch rules. So some of the frustrations behind tardy policies right now, there are extreme tardies and just normal tardies. So between five, five and nine minutes or something like that, it's counted as just like, you know, the average tardy. Those can be cleared in AM Support or Wildkid Academy or things that are offered by the school. But there are also extreme tardies, nine minutes and above, I get, or 10 minutes and above, sorry. And those can't be cleared. Those are called extreme tardies. So six of those, six of those tardies, extreme tardies, or also they can be counted as unexcused absences, can result in a no credit or an NC for the semester. So if someone is late 10 times or six times, 10 minutes or more, they can result in a no credit for the semester. And that's just something that I've been hearing frustrations about. It does seem a little extreme, but we're, we're reflecting on that. And then extreme tardies, we're trying to also look at it more at the end of the first semester or first quarter because that way we'll be able to see the bigger picture on who these tardies and no credits are really affecting so we can get a more accurate picture. And we've seen that, or what I've heard is that those extreme tardies are usually coming from lunch or at the beginning of the school day. And then leading into lunch issues, we've just seen that there's a bit of, there's not as much organization as we'd like when it comes to lines and getting into cafeterias and leaving school. It's kind of a mess. And I've had meetings with Dr. Kinsey, actually, where we've talked about this. And she's told me that the IT department is working really hard on making everything really efficient for scanning in and out of buildings, uh, the building. And we just, we really appreciate that. And we're just also thinking about how, as we're tightening up on tardy policies, it's also kind of harder to get in and out of places. Sorry, I'm going on so long. We are in the student union. We are also starting to plan the student forum. It was previously, previously called the Weatherbell Forum, but we're trying to come up with a new name.
Can Bell?
No, I'm just kidding. Or Kinsey Bell. It's, it's, it's off in the air. And that's for December. And we're also trying to recruit new members to get like a wider spectrum of views and things like that. And then lastly, personally, what I've heard and seen that's like separate from the student union, I'm, you know, I'm trying to separate those categories, making sure that I'm really making myself available to the entire student body and finding the balance between grace, which is what Dr. Kinsey and I talked about, grace and also accountability. So that kind of concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you so much. Look forward to those reports each month. It really helps us stay connected. So thank you. Okay, and Dr. Campbell, your report.
Thank you. Grace and accountability. I like that.
That is beautiful.
It is the name of the game.
Yes.
So Evanston Township High School District 202, we've launched a multi-part listening and learning series this school year to establish an effective and collaborative process for communicating with students, families, staff, and community members. And some of the issues that you all have discussed tonight, we will be discussing as a part of this Talk Back Series with the community. And I just also want to say thank you for your commitment to the safety of our students and staff because certainly these, these shootings have had a cascading, compounding effect on our students and our staff. And so a commitment to safety is really important. So the superintendent Listening and Learning Series provides many opportunities for stakeholders to understand and engage in the work of the district. So here are these components to that. We're accepting nominations for the Community Advisory Council. The ETHS Community Advisory Council group will be comprised of nine to 10 individuals representing parents, residents, community leaders, and students that will help provide transparency and two-way communication between district leadership and the school community. The Community Advisory Council nominations are due Friday, September 17th. And once the, the committee is formed, it will be quarterly and on select weekday evenings at ETHS. We're also planning community Talk Backs. I will be joined by school leaders in conversations to help build and strengthen relationships in the community and together define values, purpose, and goals. The community Talk Backs will be held at different locations in Evanston and Skokie. We like to get out there and talk with the community about some of the things that we're doing, pre-decisional, so that it can inform how we move forward with certain aspects in the district. We have included talking circles with staff. I joined Dr. Kinsey last week to kick off monthly conversations on campus that she will host with staff to provide updates and hear feedback. All staff, including custodial, maintenance, engineers, nutrition services, safety support staff, and teachers council members are welcome and encouraged to attend. We are also planning Wildkid walkabouts with students, and I will provide opportunities for the students to discuss the issues that are important to them and impact their school experience, like tardies and extended tardies and detentions. Walkabouts will be held at different times before, after school, and during the lunch blocks. Dr. Kinsey and I are also collaborating with the student unions to host some sort of a forum, as Nicole just mentioned. And the feedback session, open to all current ETHS students. The forum is going to be held during the school day. And finally, I'm happy to announce that I'm hosting a Wildkid Way Podcast, a new platform that will help connection with the school community. And that first podcast will be released later this month. And happy to announce that my first guest on that podcast is Dr. Kinsey herself. So we're just providing ways to share information. I think our podcast is about 15 or 20 minutes. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, for recording that. And just looking for ways to engage so that people can get information. And that's below the line and kind of hear some of the decisions and why the decisions are made and just having conversations. And Nicole, I plan to invite you to a conversation on the podcast as well. So that is my report for the evening.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Look like you've been doing that like. Okay, so moving on with our agenda. We are at our budget hearing. The hearing for the 2223 budget for Evanston Township High School is now called to order. All right. Hello, the first order of business is the acceptance of the notice of publication.
Okay. Thought I was prepared. Forgot that part. So thank you, President, Madam President. On August 4th, 2022, the Notice of Public Hearing for the final budget was published, published in the local Evanston Review. I believe you have the dates of publication in your packet. We can provide an actual copy of the notice if you would like one.
Can I have a motion to accept the notice of publication of the budget hearing?
So moved.
Call, please.
Yes, please.
Yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. The next order of business is a short presentation of the budget by our CFO, Mary Rodino, and interim CFO, Kendra Williams.
Thank you. I was so busy thinking of my one-liner. I was gonna say, if it's 9:45, it must be time for a financial presentation. And I forgot about the script, so I apologize for slowing us down a little bit. So we have a presentation for you. We're, we're not going to make this too long because we've already done this process once in June. So we are going to just share some information with you regarding the final budget. And we'll kind of alternate a little bit, but Kendra's gonna start out our presentation for the final budget.
Oh, and welcome, Kendra.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, board. All right, so just to start, as far as the state budget goes, we know, we know at this time that the governor did propose that we're gonna have level funding, which honestly is a blessing because, you know, rather than looking for increases, we're just really hoping that if things can just stay status quo, because you never really know with the state what's gonna happen. And so we were grateful for that, that we are looking at a flat funding situation for this fiscal year. And then we always talk about this, and even though it hasn't been addressed for some time, and we haven't heard anything about it recently, but always in the back of our minds as we plan and conservatively, conservatively look towards the future, we keep in mind that a property tax freeze or pension funding could be an issue down the road.
And I'm so sorry because I did the exact opposite of what we had planned, right?
I'm, I'm ready to pivot.
Put her on the spot because I was taking the first half. So see how well she did. You want me to go on?
You can go for it, Mary. Mary's on retirement already.
I mean, I have one more board meeting. I'm like, what are we doing?
Just give me the.
She got an A+ because I, she's halfway through the slide, and I'm like, wait, that was my part. And I did it. Okay, and it's funny because Bill Stafford used to do that to me, but I just did it to myself, so. So some of the things you've already kind of heard about, evidence-based funding, which replaced our general state aid, I think this is six years ago. This is the sixth year of evidence-based funding, and our payments are coming in on time and as expected. That is the one state funding revenue that typically has been on time and what's been, and has come in as expected. The state has pledged level funding. We got a few thousand-dollar increase for fiscal '23. So our evidence-based funding is now right at $3 million a year. The, the corporate property replacement tax is something we spoke to you about in June, and that has turned out to be higher than prior year level. And that has turned out to be higher than prior year levels, so it's nice that some revenue source is increasing. Our sources were, our counterparts and other sources were uncertain how the pandemic would really affect this. The expectation is that, you know, this typically should at least remain at the current levels and possibly go even higher beyond fiscal '23, so that's good news for all of us. And as always, we like to talk to you about potential budget threats. Nothing has been on the table recently. I mean, we've not really heard about any of these, but we've also not heard that they won't happen. So we always want to be thinking about property tax freezes, pension cost shifts, and the future of evidence-based funding, especially if the enrollment at ETHS were to decline. So stop me when we get to your part. I'm just kidding. I think I know where to stop. Our, as always, our economic concerns or just our discussion points are the Consumer Price Index. And so in the way that the Cook County taxes are calculated, it's always the combination of two levy years. So in 2021, we had a relatively low percentage. That was at 1.4%, but we all know what has happened since then. And the 2022 levy, we know that will, that portion will be at 5%. So it'll be a blend of those two rates. So we've always known that if there's a property tax freeze, it could cancel out property tax increases. We don't expect that to happen in the immediate future, but it's just always something that we know could happen. We do know that payment dates for the fall taxes will be later. We had a discussion about it today. We have heard anywhere from four to six months late, but I read an article today that's about a month old now that said that the county is fully anticipating that tax bills will be mailed out and due by December 31st. The the trick to that is that we're not exactly sure then how long it will take the county to turn around and send the money to school districts and municipalities and other taxing bodies. So we are definitely having some internal conversations to be prepared for potential short-term borrowing. We talked to you in June about, this is a good example of why it's a good idea to be conservative with fund balance levels of, you know, typically four months for us. But if those due dates go into the new year, we'll be watching that closely in the fall, just to make sure that we're on top of it. So the 2023 final budget is just under $100 million. That's actually kind of a big threshold that you'll you'll pass next year, I'm sure, with the budget. So we're at 99.97 million. That's for all the funds added together. And that does include what we call the non-operating funds, which are bond and interest, the IMRF Fund and the Capital Fund. And this is just under a 4% increase from last year's budget. So the operating funds, which are really the funds that we use to operate most of the expenses of running the school, are about 3.5% over last year. And that does include, just as we mentioned in June, it includes a portion of the federal relief funds, S or Round 3, that we talked about earlier in the spring with you as well. Okay, she was gonna shut my button off. I beat her to it.
So here, we just have a visual representation of our revenue budget. You can see here that when it comes to property taxes, that's making up 83% of our revenue. And so really, when it comes to property taxes, that's how we're able to have a balanced budget. So it really is a thanks to the community, right? Because it's through those property tax dollars and their support through property tax dollars that we're able to have this balanced budget. And then next, the next biggest chunk of that pie would be the corporate property replacement tax that Mary had mentioned before. We saw an increase there, so that's making up about 5% of our budget. And then we just have some smaller pieces going down from there from some other local revenues that would include things like, sorry, nutrition services, our food program, or rentals that we may have, things of that nature would be making up other local revenue. There's some categorical state aid in there. And then evidence-based funding, which was mentioned before. And so Mary was able to touch on property taxes and how it would be a blend of the two levy years. And so we also talked about the threat of what could happen if those payments do come in much later than anticipated. So those are just things that we're keeping a watchful eye on at this point, making sure that we're planning. We definitely made sure that we were budgeting conservatively when it came to our revenues and just taking the necessary proactive steps that we could at this point. Nope, you're fine. And for evidence-based funding, flat next year. We never know what's gonna happen in the future. The state can be a wild card, as we mentioned, and so. But we're glad that it is flat this year. And then categorical state aid is also not heavily impacted this year. And so there's federal aid, which has declined in comparison to last year. But that's because last year we had some federal relief dollars that we had in the budget that we wouldn't be seeing this year. And so that hasn't fully leveled out, which is why it looks like it may be a bigger decrease for federal aid. And then just giving some points when it comes to those local revenue sources. Student fees would be one of them. And so we did not increase the student fees for the 2223 year. When we do increase fees, that is something that we do bring to the board, but that is not something that we put up for consideration this year. Just given the the climate that we're in, you know, not really fully recovered from. I mean, we're still going through the pandemic, right? And so it didn't seem like a good time to be addressing that. And so we looked for other ways, and when we were budgeting revenues and everything, but we did not pass off anything as far as the student fees are concerned. Student parking fees, we did increase from 300 to 400. We did do some research to compare to what other school districts were doing. And we did decide that after many years, it was time for an increase for parking fees. But we also did an allowance for students that aren't free and reduce lunch. And it's the first time that we took that approach to parking fees. And so we made sure that even with that increase, that we were just mindful of how that may affect certain populations. And then where it comes to summer school, there were no increases for 2022 either. And many students are subsidized for summer school if they're free and reduce lunch. And so that brings us to expenditures, just another visual representation. Salaries and benefits make up the majority of that pie. And so from there, we have purchase services. That may be things like transportation services, off-campus placement, things of that nature. And then from there, the smaller chunks just being things like supplies, materials, capital outlay, and tuition. So for salaries, like I said, the biggest chunk of our expenditures, they've gone up about 4.62%. So as you know, we were able to successfully negotiate four contracts this year. So a lot of those employment contracts are a big reason for the increase. And then also increases for non-union employees. And of course, any positions that we may have added due to student-level increases. Also, fringe benefits are going up by nearly 3%. Supplies and materials and purchase services, we were able to reduce by about 4% this year. And then capital outlays decreasing by 36% when it comes to the Ed Fund and the Operations and Maintenance Fund. And so with that decrease, a lot of that may have been some increases that happened last year, also related to COVID. And so now, once again, some of those things may look a little wonky as we go from a year where we're trying to address the needs of the pandemic to a more normal year. And so we anticipate that next year, things will level out. We may not, won't see such big spikes. And then tuition is increasing by 34.68%. And so for the education fund, you know, we talked about how in total, for all of our funds, we're looking at nearly 100 million budget. Well, 79.2 million of that is for the education fund. So we know that that is the biggest part of our our budget. And that in that fund, we're seeing a 4.9% increase over FY '22. Operations and maintenance, so the proposed 2023 budget, 8.22 million, and then that's a 7.3% decrease. And so again, that goes into what I was saying about operations and maintenance, just seeing a decrease because we don't have expenses that may have been related to COVID as we did last year. And then, oh, sorry. And then as far as values-based budgeting, we are trying to make sure that when we're budgeting, we're looking at what the needs are and cutting where we can without sacrificing what's truly important here, which is, of course, taking care of our students, educating our students. And so we, you know, look at the money that's being spent for contractual services, supplies and materials. We try to make conservative adjustments there when we can. When there's attrition, you know, we try to use that to save dollars and try to not cut in places where it truly matters, you know, staying away from cuts in the classroom, things of that nature. And just making sure that we keep that at the forefront, because we know that the budget, of course, directly impacts student outcomes. And so we are always trying to be mindful of that when budgeting. Instruction is a top priority. Instruction is our top priority. We want to maintain a reasonable student-teacher ratio and avoid personnel layoffs whenever possible. And so when it comes to our financial plan moving forward, we are going to be continually monitoring the state's financial condition, monitoring revenues, when we can expect those revenues to come in, making sure that our expenses are matching with our revenues as best we can, installing capital expenditures that reduce operating costs. We're always looking for efficiencies where we can find them. Continuing our employee wellness strategy. We know healthcare costs, they're going up. They're continually going up. And we know that one of the ways that we can mitigate that is by making sure that we're utilizing our employee wellness program. And so just looking for ways that we, creative ways, wherever we can to make sure that we're keeping costs down. And then plan reorganizations based on analysis as needed. So whenever we can shift things, even if it is related to personnel, if possible, to just make sure that we're containing cost. Any questions?
I have a quick comment. So thank you for for this. And and thank you for not increasing the student fees. But I I just quickly want to advocate for the families in the middle. You know, you know, those are the the families that make too much to to qualify for free and reduced, but don't make enough or don't make, yeah, and don't make enough to absorb the extra increases. And they're being hit everywhere. And what I'm finding is that it's those families in the middle that are slipping and struggling. Because we know, we just got a bunch of data, we know that it's hard to live in Evanston and, you know, make or be middle-class, if that even exists anymore. So, you know, I know it's, everything is thoughtful and we consider everything. But parking for a family in the middle may be a sacrifice or not. Or there are some families that feel that it's safer for their student, their child, to drive to school than to take public transportation because of everything we're just talking about. And they're making sacrifices to come up with that $400. So I just want us to consider that as we are considering and listening to everything that's going on.
Thank you for that.
Other questions? I had one. Tuition. When you said tuition is going up 34%, is that for outplaced students, 34%? Wow.
Yes. But keep in mind that the last, and I was gonna mention this when Kendra was talking about it, and I thought I'd just kind of wait till the end, and so you and I were thinking about the same thing. But you have to remember that the last few years have not been regular years for that line item.
Sure.
You know, especially during the pandemic. So, you know, where we might have had more residential placements in the past, like those might have gone into more like a day placement.
Sure.
And so the costs are not out of hand, I'll say. And also, we do have a good amount of reimbursement towards that expense when it occurs. So yes, I would say there are probably some increased numbers in some placements to those off-campus facilities that we put into a line called tuition. The one good thing, there's not a huge raise in something else that's lumped in there, which is the Park School budget. Like, all of those things are in that line that's labeled tuition. But I would say, to Kendra's point, some of those things have not quite leveled off yet from pandemic years.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. That just, that number jumped out at me.
Yeah, it was, it jumped out at me when she read it, too. I've looked at this thing 100 times, so. Did you have something you want to say about that, tuition?
The only thing that I was gonna add is that, of course, you know, like, a lot of our off-campus placement facilities, they're provided an allowable rate by the state, and so that is helpful in just making sure that the spikes don't affect us as much as some other purchase services may.
Yeah, I don't really have a question, just a thank you to both of you. Welcome, Kendra. It's good to have you officially here, even though you've been here before. But and just thank you, because really, I say this all the time, but it bears repeating that, you know, if we aren't fiscally sound, we can't do any of the things. We can't address any of the problems. We can't increase these fabulous classes that we offer. We can't have trauma-informed staff and services. We just can't do any of that. Our racial equity work doesn't exist if we don't have the money to pay for all the important work that we do. So and you guys are the keepers of that. And Mary has done just a fabulous job every year that I've been here and even before I was here. And and Kendra, we know that you're right there with her. And even though we're gonna have to say goodbye to Mary next month, which I'm very sad about, I know that, you know, we won't miss a beat. And so I just really appreciate all the work that you do together and and keeping us in a place where we can do the important work that we do every day. So thank you both very much.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you, because it really is a collaborative effort, right? Between the board, our administration, what we do in the business office. It's all by us supporting one another and working in collaboration, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Pat. I actually enjoyed going through the budget. Just because it just reflects what we're all about at ETHS. Our values. It reflects the, our commitment to our students, the racial equity work. And as Pat said, we wouldn't be able to do it if we if we didn't have a solid base. I appreciate your anticipation of some of the threats and and being conservative as best you could over the last few years. I just think it's really just paid off for us. It continues to pay off for us. And and really, the 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 money, you know, people spend money on what's important to them. So I just feel like how our money is spent in this district really is the root of our commitment to the work that we do. So so I also want to say thank you. I appreciate it, Kendra. Welcome officially. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
It's really good to have you. And and for me, it's good to see that relationship and collaboration between the two of you. I can tell you, you work closely together. You know each other well. And that will only benefit you and us in the long run after October. So, thank you.
She has me on speed dial, but she cannot call me before 9:00 in the morning.
Okay, are there other questions, board members? If not, I'll go, I'll keep going here. Thank you, Ms. Rodino and Ms. Williams, for your presentation. Next is the public comment portion of the budget hearing. Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, I now declare this hearing is adjourned. The board will take action on the budget later. It's after 10 o'clock, my voice stops working. It's after 10 o'clock, my voice stops working. Thank you. I guess I can keep going.
Oh, no.
I was ready to adjourn. Okay. We are at items for action. The first item is approval of the final budget. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. The next item is approval of final Park School budget for 202223.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The next item is the, our Latino Heritage Month proclamation. And we're going to hear a couple of people. Yes. Start with the Spanish and then go to the English.
Mes Nacional de la Herencia Hispana Latina, 15 de septiembre del 2022 a 15 de octubre del 2022. A lo largo de nuestra historia, nuestra nación ha sido enriquecida por el pasado histórico de todos los que llaman hogar a los Estados Unidos de América. Los ancestros de la comunidad hispana latina han estado en este continente por siglos, precediendo las fronteras actuales de los Estados Unidos. Y generaciones han tejido las fibras únicas en el diverso tejido de nuestro país y jugaron un importante rol en la formación de nuestro carácter nacional como un pueblo de ilimitadas posibilidades.
National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month, September 15th, 2022 through October 15th, 2022. Throughout our history, our nation has been enriched by the storied paths of all who call the United States of America home. Ancestors of America's Hispanic Latino community have been on this continent for centuries, preceding the current boundaries of the United States. And generations have woven unique threads into the diverse fabric of our country and played an important role in shaping our national character as a people of limitless possibility.
Los hispanos y latinos contribuyen al éxito de nuestra nación de maneras extraordinarias. Ellos sirven en las fuerzas armadas y el gobierno asisten a las escuelas en toda América y fortalecen la economía. Ellos son el padre que trabaja en dos empleos para darle a sus hijos una mejor vida y la madre que se aventura a tomar un riesgo y comenzar un negocio. Ellos son el estudiante que persigue sus más grandes aspiraciones mediante la educación superior. Ellos son el residente legal permanente que busca naturalizarse y convertirse en ciudadano. Y el líder de negocios cuyos seres queridos han vivido en los Estados Unidos por generaciones. Ellos muchas veces son bilingües. Una invaluable intelectual habilidad del idioma que nos esforzamos en brindar a todos nuestros estudiantes. Cada día vemos el tremendo impacto que ellos tienen en nuestras comunidades y ellos reflejan una verdad perdurable en el corazón de nuestra nación. No importa de dónde vienen o de dónde son sus raíces. Con trabajo duro y perseverencia pueden lograrlo en América.
Hispanics and Latinos contribute to our nation's success in extraordinary ways. They serve in the military and government, attend schools across America, and strengthen the economy. They are the father who works two jobs to give his children a better life and the mother who ventures out to take a risk and start a business. They are the student who pursues their greatest aspirations through higher education. They are the lawful, permanent resident who seeks to naturalize and become a citizen and the business leader whose loved ones have lived in the United States for generations. They are oftentimes bilingual and invaluable intellectual language skill we strive to provide all our students. Each day, we see the tremendous impact they have on our communities and they reflect an enduring truth at the heart of our nation. No matter where you come from or where your roots are, with hard work and perseverance, you can make it in America.
Para honrar los logros de los hispanos y latinos en América, el Congreso mediante ley pública 10402, según enmienda, ha autorizado y solicitado emitir una proclama designado del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre como el mes nacional de la herencia hispana latina.
To honor the achievements of Hispanics and Latinos in America, the Congress by Public Law 100-402, as amended, has authorized and requested issuing annually a proclamation designating September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month.
Por tanto, nosotros, la junta de educación del distrito 202, proclamamos que en celebración de los excepcionales líderes hispano latinoamericanos del pasado, presente y futuro y las valiosas contribuciones de la comunidad hispana latina, proclamamos del 15 de septiembre del 2022 al 15 de octubre del 2022 como el mes de la herencia hispana latina en la escuela preparatoria del municipio de Evanston.
Therefore, we, the Board of Education of District 202, proclaim, proclaim that in celebration of past, present, and future exceptional Hispanic Latino-American leaders and the valuable contributions of the Hispanic Latino community, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2022 through October 15th, 2022 as Hispanic Latino Heritage Month at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you both. Can I have a motion for acceptance, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
To Tarrich?
Yes.
Yanti?
Absolutely, yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Savage-Williams?
Yes. Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of press policy issue number 109, approval of minutes from August 8th, 2022, regular meeting and closed session, approval of bills, treasurer's report from July 2022, personnel report, negotiated agreement from Nutrition Services.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
To Tarrich?
Yes.
Yanti?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Savage-Williams?
Yes. Okay. Do we have any older new business that anyone would like to bring up? If not, can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, just make sure you sign this document before you walk out the door. And we are adjourned.
Thank you.